Where the oath?
I'm just curious, like we do for some of the contracts.
I mean, I think I'm right.
I like that.
So you're down in?
No, no, I've been down there and this is kind of the weather that you get.
You got the samples here.
Yeah, it's very nice. Let's have a unanimous agreement on those so we could.
In fact, you know, the only thing is like they're not, my butt doesn't sink into it anymore. It supports me now. That's a little bit.
Well, we won't go there, shall we? Not go there? I think you're supposed to wear your mask today. Hey Patty, if you got an extra mask for Jim, have you got an extra mask for Jim? Well, I know, but your mustache and your goatee look like a, look like a mask. If you hadn't opened your mouth, I wouldn't have known.
No, I honestly, I haven't been to Michigan for over a decade.
You want to board when we didn't agree on those things?
I was in the audience.
We'll maximize this so it looks bigger on the screen.
No, it was horrible.
Okay, and then you'll click that. And then when you got stopped here.
I like it.
There'll be a button up here that says.
I vote yes. And you got my okay to get rid of these chairs and give them to the good home. That's right. On vacation? Some of your family doesn't want them.
How's it going?
Yeah.
Yeah. Shouldn't be paying that stuff.
It's things like that because she ended up in an arson investigation if it goes there.
All right, it's 7:00 PM on the dot, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. But everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, clerk, call another roll call, please.
Mayor Plesky.
Here.
Trusty Berkshire.
Here.
Trusty Delpenna.
Here.
Trusty Domke.
Here.
Trusty Lenisa.
Here.
Trusty Prakowski.
Here.
Trusty Trejo.
Here. Thank you so much. We'll now move to presentation of the prepared agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that carries. We'll now move to village board public comment. Anyone wishing to provide a comment on a topic or on an agenda item may address the village board during this time. We all accept public comment via online or in person. I'll first ask with the clerk, do we have anyone submit prior?
We did. We had a, received a public comment from David Yocum on the topic of stop signs at Maple and Prospect. He states that eastbound lane doesn't see sign until it is too late to stop. Westbound has no sign. In parentheses, sign street before does not seem to apply to Prospect Street. This crosswalk is dangerous and I never cross if any traffic is near this crosswalk. Please rethink.
Um, Public Works, do we have any information on this intersection?
Yes, so I have gone out there and looked at the intersection. I also spoke with the resident regarding his concerns. Um, we're going to look more in depth at the intersection of Maple and Prospect. We've looked at Maple and Park before, but identifying traffic volumes and pedestrian volumes at this intersection as well as signage that needs to be addressed. There are some signage signs that are, could be relocated into better places. We'll also look and see if there's any other way to call attention to the crossing, but that's where we're at right now. We're going to continue to study it and also take a look more holistically at some of our pedestrian crossing signage throughout the village.
Great. Thank you so much for the additional information. Do we have anyone in the audience today that wishes to make a public comment? Yes, please come up to the podium. And please state your name and address for the record.
Three one out of Dry, Roselle Forest. Questions about the cannabis? Useful medical purposes only or responsible for.
So what we're considering tonight is allowing recreational uses in the village. This is simply an ordinance that would allow them to be permitted. Anyone would have to apply and go through the special use permit application if it was adopted as proposed, but the board still has to approve that tonight. So we do not have any businesses that have approached the village at this time to open, so this is just purely adding it to the books as of use that would be allowed with the correct permissions. Okay. Thank you so much. Do you have any other public comment tonight, Terry?
My name is Terry. Before I begin, I want to say again, although I said this before, thank you to the leaders of Roselle, especially Mayor, Mayor Plesky, Chief Heron, Patty, and Brian. I really appreciate the attitudes and the cooperation that I've received. I really, really appreciate it. It makes a huge amount of difference. Um, what I'd like to say tonight is really, it's not a complaint on Roselle. It's just something that I see and I'm trying to give Roselle a heads up. So that it doesn't necessarily happen here, so that we can help it to not happen here. And what I'm speaking of tonight is very recently Medina Road from Irving Park up to 390 was resurfaced. I think that they're wrapping that up because they painted the lines on the streets. I would invite any of you, including the public works, planning, design, all the people who have anything to do with construction jobs. Go drive that stretch or walk that stretch. Better off walk that stretch. Because there are several issues with it, and I know they've resurfaced the road to make it better for cars. They've made it a whole lot worse for pedestrians. I'm going to be very brief, but I'll just give you a couple of things there. First of all, the place where the street meets the curbs, there's now a lip. Up to the curb. That's a trip hazard for pedestrians. That's a hazard for car tires hitting that to wear and tear on both the street and the cars. And also, if it rains, there's going to be a whole bunch of water that's trapped there now that can't just get to the sewers on the, on the curb. So there's a lot of problems with that. Secondly, I don't know if they're finished with this or not, but most of the signage is down and such like that for the constructions, but they've got a lot of construction debris in that gutter, which is also going to limit the flow of water. It's also a trip hazard for those of us in the spots where they don't have a sidewalk on the road, for those of us who can't walk in the other debris and such like that off the road. Now we can't even walk on the curb because of all the debris and such like that in there. I was told by DuPage County technician a while back that the stretch between Crest Avenue and 390 doesn't have a sidewalk because of the wetland preserve, although there's another whole side of the road that could have one. But now we've refa, we've resurfaced Medina Road, we still have no sidewalk or path or any place for pedestrian to walk unless I want to walk in the weeds and the grass and the mud and the dirt. And speaking of the ruts, we can't put a sidewalk there because it's protected for wetlands, but they sure drove a lot of heavy equipment up there. And I know that for a fact because I not only had to go around them one time, but if you walk in the grass there, there's ruts this deep. Trip hazard covered by grass and weeds. You can't even see when they're, when they're coming up. They repainted the lanes. They didn't put in crosswalks. I know there's no walk signals and such like that, but they didn't even paint crosswalks in there. So again, this isn't something that you folks did, and I'm not yelling at you folks. I'm just trying to stress again and again and again, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. And I would really appreciate it if the city of Roselle, public works, planners, designers, everybody, I don't know how you can, how the contracts work with the individual construction companies. Watch them carefully, folks. They're, uh, they're not doing any of us any favors. So I just want to let you guys know and I invite all of you to go drive or walk that stretch of road to see if. Well, I know what I'm saying is true, but not just take my word for it. Go look at what a job that they did. Let's, I love Roselle. Let's never let that happen to Roselle.
Thank you so much, Terry. And just for those at home, just so they know Medina Road is under the jurisdiction of DuPage County, so we can definitely reach out to our counterparts there and understand what's going on there. So thank you again for bringing that to our attention. Any other public comment here tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to officials and staff reports. Undermine, I have two. First, I have a Patriots Day proclamation that I'd like to read in honor of the 20th anniversary of September 11th. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, terrorists hijacked four civilian aircraft, crashing two of them into the towers of the World Trade Center, New York City, and a third into the Pentagon outside Washington DC. And whereas the fourth hijacked aircraft crashed in southwestern Pennsylvania after passengers attempted to take control of the aircraft in order to prevent the hijackers from crashing the aircraft into an important symbol of democracy and freedom. And whereas these attacks were by far the deadliest terrorist attacks ever launched against the United States, killing thousands of innocent people, including hundreds of firefighters and police officers. And whereas in the aftermath of the attacks, the people of the United States stood united and providing support for those in need. And whereas by act of Congress of the United States dated December 18th, 2001, public law 107-89 was passed, designated each September 11th as Patriot Day and requesting the president to issue each year a proclamation calling on state and local governments and the people of the United States to observe Patriot Day with appropriate programs and activities, whereas all departments, agencies, and instrumentalities of the United States and interested organizations and individuals are requested, requested to display the flag of the United States at half-staff and that the people of the United States observe a moment of silence on Patriot Day and honor the individuals who lost their lives as a result of the terrorist attacks against the United States that occurred on September 11th, 2001. And whereas the village of Roselle recognizes the sacrifice, this nation's first responders on that horrific day was every day to keep this country safe. Now, therefore, I, mayor, with the board of trustees, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2021, as Patriot Day in the village of Roselle and honor those individuals who lost their lives and to those who risked their lives on a daily basis in our own community. Let us honor them with a moment of silence. With that said, I'll ask for this to be approved by acclamation of the board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's pose nay. Any abstentions? And I know we've been working because of this, uh, being the 20th anniversary, the police and fire department are hosting a ceremony that will be outside of the fire department at the plaza there with the flag, and it'll be starting at 7:30 AM that day. So anyone who would like to attend, please join us there. We do actually have an artifact from the World Trade Center on display at our fire station, so we wanted to make sure that we commemorated this anniversary with respect and a solemn event, so. Uh, changing gears a little bit, um, I have for the board to consider the appointment of Joseph Lewis to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire July 31st, 2026. So Joe, do you want to come up to the podium real quick and just give the board some information? I know it wasn't included in the packets. I just want to give them a chance to just let them share a little bit about his background and whatnot with you briefly.
Um, Joe Lewis currently live at 562 Seem Circle, grew up on Windsor Drive, right by Lake Park West. Pretty much from, let's say, five years old until I moved to Bowling Brook for a bit, came back. Went to college at UIC, currently practicing as a certified professional civil engineer. Out of Rosemont and have lived with my wife and my one-year-old son.
Perfect. So I think it'd be great to have some civil engineering background on our board. I don't, we don't have anyone with that kind of background to date. We know increasingly engineering is a important part of what we're doing with development. So is there a motion to approve? We'll move.
Again.
Oh, second, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye. Let's pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none. Joe, I'm going to hand this to you. If you want to run it back there because of our videos. Just right there. So your, last time we did this, it was weird. For those of you at home, so you just raise your right hand and repeat after me. You've got it right in front of you. So I state your name.
Joseph Lewis.
Having been appointed to the position of, uh, it should be.
Red pen's out.
Yep, it should be board member. Chairman. So with that one correction, we're going to go with this. Just repeat after me. Having been appointed to the position of board member? Or commissioner, I guess, rather.
Yeah, having been appointed to the position of board member.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And Zoning Commission.
And the village of Roselle.
Village of Roselle.
And the counties of DuPage and Cook.
The counties of DuPage and Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commissioner.
Commissioner.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
To the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Okay, you're, you're good. If you want to sign that and give a copy to Karen, and she'll get you up to date on all your, your new fun duties. Thank you so much for serving the community. And then my only other report is just a reminder that we'll be having our slightly delayed fireworks on September 4th, fittingly for Labor Day. Public Works has been great about having the trucks on display as well as our police and fire for children. We've had some interest from some food trucks to be there, so it should be a great family fun affair. So if anyone's able to make it out, hope to see you at Lake Park West. So hopefully the weather forecast out there is going to err on the 70% chance and up to 30% chance. That's all I will say. That's all I have for my report. Any trustees have anything to report tonight? All right, we'll move to village clerk.
No report.
Village attorney.
No report.
Village administrator.
No report.
Treasurers' report.
Pardon me, and your packet tonight is the treasurer's report for the month of July. And just wanted to give some highlights. You can read it at your leisure. Invite everybody to do so. Just wanted to give this a couple of slides on the highlights. So monthly, this is for the general fund, showing the monthly budget versus actual for select revenues. And as you can see in this chart, most of the major revenues that we do track and that I track monthly against what they usually do are showing above. Almost no revenues are below budget to this point, except for video gaming, but that was because it was suspended earlier this year and is coming back. Building permits are almost even with where they should be. And business licenses are down. If you remember, there was a 25% discount for those businesses that were in business during the pandemic and prior to. And then cable franchise, that's just a timing issue. But most of the revenues are performing better than we expected. This is a slide showing general fund revenues and expenditures by department. As you can see, for the month of July, or through the month of July, the general fund is about 735,000 revenues over expenditures, and most of the departments are within budget. You know, a couple outliers, but for the most part, we're, we're right where we should expect to be. And then some highlights here. As I've been showing, I'm kind of going back to 2019, so not comparing to 2020 because it would be skewed, I believe. Sales tax is up 39% over last year, but going back to 2019, it's still 7.5% higher. Eating tax is 6% higher than, than two years ago, which is again, an excellent sign of where we're at. And our revenue of the month, instead of the flavor of the month, the revenue of the month is vehicle stickers. And vehicle sticker, sticker applications were mailed out in the middle of July using Third Millennium Associates, our new utility bill printer. So yeah, everybody, I'm sure got those in the mail. This year, we use the Illinois Secretary of State data to enhance our collections. They added just under 5,000, maybe 4,500 records. Some of those are duplicates, as we can expect, you know, from the state and, and combining data. But we did that to capture all vehicles that are registered in Roselle. Of the 22,451 vehicles that we have on record, we've sold 6,460 stickers or license plate tags, or 29% have been purchased to date. So I encourage everybody, please mail in your applications or put them in the drop box. It's probably the best way to ensure that you get them. You don't have to stand in line at Village Hall and you get, you get them in the mail or you can purchase them online. Finally, Cook County EAV information was finally received. It's taken a long time for them to do that, so I would expect Cook County tax bills will be in the mail soon. EAV increased 0.02% in Cook County. DuPage County EAV increased 2.97%, so overall, the village increased 2.57%. I believe the PTAL limit is 1.4% for this year, so the amount of property tax will be less than the percent of increase. So mathematically, that works out, but so EAV increased, and that's a good sign, even though it was very minimal, for both counties, that's a good sign. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Any questions for Tom? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. First, we have the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, or non-controversial in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items. Tonight, we have presentation approval of the village board on minutes of August 9th, 2021. Pass an ordinance, amending ordinance number 80-949, establishing a pay plan for village officers and employees. Doctor resolution appointing a delegate, an alternate delegate to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. Adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget for various funds. Pass an ordinance amending the municipal code of the village of Roselle by adding the addition of a new article for food regulation and restrictions in chapter eight, health and sanitation. Pass an ordinance repealing section 9-147, Article 3, Division 1 of Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinance of the village of Roselle. Pass an ordinance amending Chapter 24, Article 3 of the Municipal Code of the village of Roselle. Doctor resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2021 PCC sidewalk trip hazard removal program not to exceed budget amount of $40,375. Uh, adopt a resolution affirming the purchase of a truck from Friendly Ford in the amount of $36,858. Doctor resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of vehicle upfitting in the amount of $18,923. And a doctor resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of vehicle upfitting in the amount of $5,958 through the joint purchasing cooperative source wall. Is there a motion to approve? Move. Is there a second? All right. Madam clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Trusty Donkey.
Aye.
Trusty Delpenna.
Aye.
Trusty Berkshire.
Yes.
Trusty Lenisa.
Aye.
And Trusty Prakowski.
Aye. And that motion passes. And we're going to give it up to trustee Berkshire for community development so I can have a break.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing for the annexation of 23 West 671 Walnut Street.
Again.
That, we'll call a vote for the board.
Trusty Berkshire.
Yes.
Trusty Donkey.
Yes.
Trusty Trejo.
Aye.
Trusty Lenisa.
Aye.
Trusty Prakowski.
Aye.
Trusty Delpenna.
Aye.
Thank you. So I'd like to note that notice has been served and it has been published in the Daily Herald on August 6th, 2021, and also that a notice is on file with the village clerk. So with that, I would like to see, is there any member in the public who wishes to ask a question of the petitioner or village staff regarding this? So with that, I would like to see, is there any member in the public who wishes to ask a question of the petitioner or village staff regarding this? Seeing none, then, see, is there any member in the public or the petitioner themselves wish to speak in favor of the petition? Once again, seeing none. Would like to see, is there any member of the public who wished to speak against the petition? Then seeing none, I will move it to questions and comments from the board. And then seeing none, then I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll say that again.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion then to pass an ordinance authorizing the execution of the annexation agreement for 23 West 671 Walnut Street.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. So then I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance annexing territory to the village of Roselle, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, and establishing our two single-family residence zoning and amending the zoning map for 23 West 671 Walnut Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
And Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
That motion passes.
You, then I'll move on to making a motion to adopt a resolution approving a plot of subdivision lot split for the Hagerty subdivision.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries.
We'll move on to making a motion to pass an ordinance granting lot area variations and front yard setback variations for 301 West Walnut and 501 Valley Road.
Again.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Donkey.
Aye.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
That motion passes, so congratulations and welcome to the Village of Roselle, gentlemen.
All right, so now we'll change our, change a little bit.
New topic.
New topic. Whole new topic. I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance repealing the cannabis tax amendment moratorium.
Okay, thank you. Discussion is open on repealing the moratorium. Yes, Trustee Donkey.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank you, David, for having this put onto regular agenda instead of just consent agenda. Giving me a chance to say something about recreational cannabis. So I'm just gonna read these two things because I'm speaking from my heart on the issue. I know what the board's propensity is right now, but I want to just say, you know, as someone from the 60s, I can assure you that I have experience with the use of drugs. As a 20-year-old, I was most in favor of legalization. Recreational marijuana was easy to obtain, and so were many of the heroin agenics that were around. Since they were not legal, though, I had a few things to worry about. I namely had my father to worry about, my employer, and the friendly local police department of River Grove. This alone put restrictions on my usage. Thankfully, the restriction slowed me down and life growth took over. Sadly, our state has removed these restrictions, and I really pity the next generation without them. Recreational marijuana was never used because it tasted good. It wasn't like having a beer or cocktail with your dinner. Its chief use, and still is, is to get high. And we seldom took it alone. Usually, it was accompanied by alcohol of one form or another. And after indulging, we got the munchies, and I can assure you that we didn't head to a nice restaurant afterwards. Legalizing recreational marijuana can be justified by terms like, everybody's doing it. Let's regulate it so it's safe. Let's drive the street dealers out of the market. Or let's tax it as needed for added revenue. Hey, with a little imagination, you can add many other future things that society is doing that fit this definition and will probably be the next revenue generator coming soon to a town near you. Finally, growing marijuana is a huge energy sponge. The use of ultraviolet lighting and internal environmental conditions needed use a lot of energy. I just hope we realize this as much as I, I hope you realize this as much as I do. For the village of Roselle, I wanted to just say these final things. Recreational marijuana, my viewpoint. The fact that a non-binding referendum is now being treated like a binding referendum is a little disconcerting. Because 42% of the 15% of registered voters in Roselle voted no, it would be inappropriate for this board to vote cannabis in unanimously. Without another survey of Roselle businesses, I believe we are guilty of lacking sufficient data. We are consequently not making quality-driven decisions. Being a high school town and having several members on this board deeply involved in student education and development, are we sending mixed messages as leaders? Assuming passage by the board, we will dedicate the, will we dedicate the increased revenue to offset increased costs such as police, mental health, officials, or addiction? I hope so. Finally, once this is voted on, we will forever be linked to this decision. The genie will be very difficult to put back in the bottle. For the sake of my grandkids, your children, and the people who voted no under referendum, as their representative, I will vote no to recreational cannabis in Roselle.
Thank you very much, Trustee Donkey. Any other discussion from the board? All right, we'll move to a vote. Could I please have a roll call?
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
No.
That motion carries.
Then I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, Appendix A, to the village of Roselle Code of Ordinances regarding cannabis business establishments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Could I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
Trustee Donkey.
No.
And that motion carries.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance amending the code of the village of Roselle by the addition of Article 10 to Chapter 20 taxation, imposing a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one.
Yes, Trustee Trejo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before we pass the final ordinances as related to recreational cannabis, I just want to share kind of a counterpoint to Wayne's argument. The ballot is secret, but I will share my vote. I voted no on both of these, but because we committed to voting the way that the public said, I'm gonna vote to pass all three of these.
Thank you. Any other comment? All right, Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call?
Trustee Berkshire.
Yes.
Trustee Trejo.
Aye.
Trustee De La Pena.
Aye.
Trustee Perkowski.
Aye.
Trustee Lenisa.
Aye.
And Trustee Don.
Nope, still no.
That motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, I am done for the evening.
Thank you so much. We do not have anything tonight under administration, fire, or police, but Public Works never lets us down, so Trustee Donkey.
Hey. Anyway, Karen, we're back on business, right? Okay, so, let me find my, okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one for the 2021 sidewalk replacement and utility dig-up program between the village of Roselle and Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for the additional work in the amount of $28,500.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose nay. Any abstentions? And that motion carries.
Well, Mayor, I have another one. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number seven for the Devlin wastewater treatment influent pump and screening project between the village of Roselle and William Brothers Construction Incorporated in the deductible amount of $69,670 and for the contract time extension.
Okay. Any discussion? It's always nice when we get a deduction instead of an addition, so.
Yes, it is.
We have more of those?
Need a few more to add up.
We know how to vote on those things.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes.
And finally, Mayor David, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of hoist and trolley from weight in an equipment company in the amount of $82,560.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you. Trustee Donkey. Finance, Trustee Lenisa.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable list for August 23rd, 2021 in the amount of $1,627,325.6.
Okay. Any discussion on the bills list? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those pose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes. We'll go to new business next. As we did at the beginning, we have another opportunity for members of the public to provide comment on any topic or agenda item at this time. Is there anyone here today who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move to our first item overview of the town center parking restrictions. So Chief Herron and Kristen.
Good evening. We have brought up for discussion some of the parking, overall parking that we've had in the town center. As a reminder, over the last years, we've already addressed Waterbury subdivision, Maple at St. Walter's Church, Waterbury School, Woodfield Trail, Plum Grove, and Lawrence. That was the most recent one that we've done. Also, I'm gonna be meeting this week with our GIS consultant to talk about some of the other parking restrictions that are currently in place in order to compare them against the ordinances. We've presented to you three attachments. Attachment A, which is the listing of what our potential recommendations are. Attachment B, which is a map that's showing by map what the existing regulations are. And then Attachment C, what the proposed parking regulations would be. Our suggestions come really at the recommendation of the MUTCD, which is the motor vehicle regulations. And they provide to us guidance of where parking should and shouldn't be, as well as traffic regulations and flow. That's what Karen does for me, which is awesome. Thank you. But one of the things that we noticed is that most of our streets are 20, 30, 25, and 35 feet wide. Two-lane, two-lane road, so two-lane, two-way roadways with parking really requires parking in the area of 36 feet. Most of our roads, except Maple, are not at 36 feet, so they require some type of parking regulations. A lot of what we saw, too, appeared to be ancient signs or signs, relatively new signs, but maybe an offshoot of the old parking, of the old train station when it was here in Main Street. And the code has never been adjusted. So what we're asking for is for conversation about our attachment A. We really have Elm Street, Fourth is gonna be on Elm from Prospect or from Roselle Road to Prospect. Will be changed to no parking at any time. That's on North Side. Prospect on the West Side will be from Main Street to Maple. That'd be no parking at any time. Prospect on the East Side from Maple to Main Street, that's restricted parking by time limit. We would ask to remove that. Parking East Side, Maple, Maple to Elm, that's a four-hour restricted parking. We would ask to remove that as well. Howard East Side from Maple to Elm, we would add no parking any time signs. Howard, the West Side from Maple to, I'm sorry, Howard on the West Side from Elm to Main, that's again, regulated by hours. If we could ask that, that be removed. And then Maple, North Side from Spring, 197, again, that would be also removed. The one thing that we didn't do is we looked at, didn't look at spring. We figured there'll be potentially, that would be done in the future down by the Legion. We're just gonna leave that parking as normal right now, and then whatever development happens, we can revisit it when and when that does happen.
One addition is we are planning to stripe out those parking spots here later this fall, once we get this ordinance amended. And that will create more parking efficiency instead of people parking where they feel there are spaces. It would designate spaces, so we will pretty much be coming even in terms of parking spots.
And really what we talked is that without the parking restrictions, that's what the line, outline, they kind of park willy-nilly. And that was one of the requirements that we looked at is like, by marking at least the corners, it'll give them a designated area.
When choosing which side to restrict parking on, we looked at things like number of driveways on that side of the road, fire hydrants, things like that. So we were using the side of the road that maximized our ability to park.
Any questions on the board? Trustee Berkshire.
So with the exception of the Maple Elm piece, everything is, seems to, if I'm interpreting correctly, we're actually removing or improving the restriction. So it's not really a restriction, it's, we're enhancing and allowing for more parking by opening this up.
Yeah, it's really just the North Side of Elm restriction and the West Side of Prospect restriction that are removing parking. Everything else is removing at times.
Okay, and then by striping it, do you anticipate we'll be able to get more cars in, less cars?
I would say it's gonna be about the same, but it's going to be more efficient where it is and more obvious where people can park.
Okay, and my last question is, since some of these are around the residents, especially when it comes to with the removing of the various time zone piece, do we have to put a notice or anything out to letting them know because now this is changing and it?
And notify them, the overnight ordinance will still be in place. It's just the
Right.
Time limit.
Now, also, some of these will be found, have always had the most difficult time when a lot of the signs don't match ordinances, a lot of ordinances don't match the sign. So a lot of this is putting some of that back into place to make sure that the ordinance and the signs match each other or that it complies with the MUTCD. So maybe where you see signs, you either may not have them, they're in the future or vice versa, where there aren't signs, we will be putting them, but that's what occurs most often. That's always the largest challenge. That's why I think meeting with GIS later this week will give us a little bit more breadth because they've already mapped out the sign locations. So we'll be able to, or they've matched out, I think the sign locations they've matched, so then we'll be able to go into the ordinances and verify wherever.
So can I get a point of clarity? I only see that Maple and Elm has actually got a new restriction. Everything else seems to be either the same or we're actually just removing the time piece. So my, I thought you mentioned there was two things different, but.
The first two lines. So Elm Street is currently from Prospect to Fourth, but we're changing it from Roselle to Prospect.
Okay, so the length and the distance. All right, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. No further questions.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yeah, Trustee Donkey.
Are you gonna stripe the east side of Prospect?
Yes.
Oh, good, very good. Because even though I'm gonna lose some parking on the west side, being more efficient on the other side will be very helpful. And then you would put a sign like for no parking this side on Prospect, another sign maybe coming south because there's only one by the museum. And then you would probably do the same thing on Elm, right? If you're not gonna have parking on one side. I really appreciate the way you defined driveways and fire hydrants being some of the criteria that you use. That's awesome. Because now it's not just willy-nilly.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we gain, do you think we gain any parking by this, or is that another topic for a future meeting?
I think it's about net neutral.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Based on what people actually park at out there now versus what they will park out there.
But the efficiency is gonna help a lot.
I think we'll actually have people complying with the number of spaces out there as opposed to luxury. I think we'll actually have people complying with the number of spaces out there as opposed to luxury, uh, suburban two-spot parallel parking. We'll put it that way.
And Prospect, that's one of the areas where there's like no signage that's actually restricted. So those are the, a lot of that were just.
Yeah.
Please. One quick question. So when we do stripe those parking spaces, if someone does park in two spots, is that ticketable or not? It's ticketable? Okay.
Yeah, the way we parked, we've identified, we've all sat down and kind of identified by those markings, it beats the code. So if you block, if you took two over, it's parked outside of the restricted areas. There is fine.
Consensus to move forward from the board?
Yes.
So I think you guys got the green light. I would just add to what Bruce had said. I would just, let's send a letter to the few houses on Elm and Howard that are impacted. I think you've got two on Howard specifically, and you've got maybe four on, on Elm. So let's just send them a letter and let them know. And I think let's, this diagram was really helpful. It'd be great to send that to the Main Street merchants. Maybe they can do like a parking diagram if they so choose to promote that there is spots available. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next we'll move on to the annexation policy discussion. So Jason or Karen, whoever would like to kick that one off?
Not all at once now.
You can draw straws. I don't, you know, however you guys want to deal with it.
It's not working, dude.
Karen can start and I'll add as necessary.
Sounds great.
All right. So unfortunately I missed the last meeting. Um, so, uh, based on what was discussed, uh, Jason and I have tried to put together some information um, for your use as you sort of provide further direction to, uh, village staff regarding the installation of sidewalks, um, with properties, uh, annexing into the village. The main part of this memo is sort of a list of, um, impacts that could, uh, or a list of items that could impact the installation of a sidewalk. Um, corner lots, obviously you're going to have two frontages where you have to install sidewalk, um, which will cost more money. Slope and topography, um, that's something that, you know, we've been discussing recently. Um, stormwater issues, a lot of our unincorporated areas have rural cross-sections, so no curb and gutters. So we have to deal with culvert pipes and, um, ditches that have been filled in over the years, things like that. Um, utility conflicts, um, including lift stations, things underground that, uh, we may not want to cover up with a public sidewalk. And then, um, building codes and construction standards, so making sure that sidewalks are the appropriate width and then also meet ADA and any other pertinent ordinances. Um, so the second page kind of poses, posits questions to the board um, in order for staff to sort of receive direction and provide you either more information or uh, bring forth new ordinances or anything like that.
Jason, did you need to add anything?
No, I, I, yeah, I think it's just obviously the policy direction here tonight for the board to discuss. And then I think there's a staff implementation of said policy that's also part of this, but I think if we're able to, to hear the board talk through some of the policy stuff, then maybe we can cover any of the basis of kind of how we administer and implement some of that based on the most recent case.
Yeah. And I think just before we open up the conversation, this was intentionally set up as an annexation policy discussion. So we're not talking about any specific property. We can certainly discuss hypotheticals, but I think the idea is to make sure that we have consensus around what do our, what do we want our policy to be for annexations? We've done pre-annexations, but we could do something wholly different or consistent with annexations. And once we have a policy that we agree on, then we can discuss implementation. But I think to discuss one before the other is a little bit premature. So I know staff provided kind of three questions and I think they're in a logical order. So, um, i- if the board is willing, I'd like to go and start with item number one and just start there and pose for a conversation. Should all annexation agreements include the requirement to install a sidewalk? And we can move on to the next conversation of what does that entail? But do we want a sidewalk? Yes or no? Bruce?
Mr. Mayor, actually I, I would disagree. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the ideas and some of the way they're going to implement policy. I'd like to have some understandings about that before I make that kind of a decision. Because I think in certain circumstances, we, the village, oh, the residents, at least some consultative type of opportunities, we should, we have the knowledge, we have the, the basis. So before I go any further on talking about some of those ideas, I just wanted to mention that I'm not ready to answer that question. So I have a little bit better understanding of how we are going to work within the confines of annexation and how we're going to make some of these decisions before we just flat, wake out whether it's a yes or no on that.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, I, I would argue that staff will do what they're told to do, or they can provide us how to do it um, from their perspective as well. But I think what's struggling right now is we don't know what we're trying to implement. And if we don't have that North Star of what we're trying to do for residents, implementation's kind of up in the air. Jason? Oh, yes.
I suppose if we decide not to require, uh, installation of sidewalks, none of the rest of this conversation matters, right? Correct?
And, and from a start, we could have Karen talk through a typical annexation and how it's initiated, what are kind of the, the application process, what is the typical communication that occurs between staff and an applicant? Um, and I mean, that could be somewhere to start if, if you're looking, David, for us to kind of hit the highlights of our current role in that process and, and how that moves through the various reviews and, and ultimately leading to a public hearing.
Absolutely. I think we, we can start there. I think though, not every application is equal, right? So I think we'll have to also take some side roads to understand potential variations that do occur, if that's okay.
Which I think is the, those, that's what I thought those first five, uh, bullet points kind of identified. There is uniquenesses that we should probably also take into consideration.
Yep. And Jim, did you have anything you wanted to discuss as far as the sidewalk piece of it?
Uh, you know, the only thing I want to say at this point is, is the current policy that was set forth by ordinance. So if you're going to move into, um, the different policies, say for example, not requiring sidewalks, you've got an ordinance. You've got number of annexation, pre-annexation agreements out there that are subject to this ordinance. For example, in Roselle Countryside, we have, um, approximately fifteen annexation agreements that are currently subject to two dash two ninety-three, the ordinance. Which sometimes can be misled because it's talks about pre-annexation, but a pre-annexation is an annexation. The same concept. So, um, just to keep in mind as you go forward with this, you've got an ordinance in place, the ordinance is subject of, right, here it raises a tremendous amount of debate and discussion at the time. And that currently sets the policy for staff. When I went through it today, there was an error in that ordinance, the codification of that. Um, in sub paragraph, uh, two dash two ninety-three E, in the fourth line, it says adoption of the annexation agreement. Draft in my office says annexation ordinance, and that's the only way it makes sense. So if you're going to stick with it, we should do a technical amendment of that ordinance and take out the word agreement and insert ordinance in place just so staff can clearly understand how it functions and how it was intended to function at the time. Um, I don't know how that happened in the codification. I got a draft in my office that says ordinance, not annexation. However, that being said, you've got an ordinance in place right now and you've got more than just the Roselle Countryside annexation agreement. So there's other pre-annexation agreements out there right now that have essentially adopted the requirements set forth in this ordinance.
So if I understand correctly, basically you just answered question number one.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that we already have a, a yes in play. And if we wanted to change that, we would have a much bigger situation of going in and repealing some of those things.
Yeah, you could repeal on the alternative, Bruce. You could amend it.
Or amend it.
So, you know, say for example, if you wanted to call out the distinctions where there might be some real physical impossibility, you could do that if you decided you wanted to, but this is what you've got right now.
Right.
You have a question at the end. Tom has a question.
Donkey.
Hi. Um, okay. So taking what, uh, Mr. Knippen said into account, uh, currently though, annexation agreements do not require a sidewalk, correct? It's only a pre-annexation or agreements?
No.
They're the same. They both.
Then why would it say here?
Don't read the title of this section. It's misleading. Where it says pre-annexation agreements, that includes annexations.
Okay. So then why is quest?
Body of the ordinance itself. You'll see that that's exactly what it says, Tom. It says that the property when annex, annex shall install public sidewalks. Um, and it just doesn't apply alone to pre-annexation. It applies to both annexation and pre-annexation agreements. And traditionally that's been the case in the village for decades and decades. For a variety of different reasons. There's been some variation in annexation agreements and pre-annexation agreements, particularly in terms of the timing of the installation of the sidewalk. And, you know, things like that, but it's the same concept legally.
Okay. So then for question number two, it's just rendered moot then, because it's question number two, as posed by staff then, does make a distinction. Cause it says if, should the requirement be identical to the requirement for pre-annexation? Since that would imply there is a difference then.
So.
That would imply you could amend the ordinance to accomplish that.
Correct.
If you wanted to.
Cause.
In the current ordinance, however, it's the same.
What, what I would say to that too, if I could just borrow your copy, what I think is in question is we've talked about the first part, which, um, Jim has called out shall install public sidewalks. And I think it's the second part of that, that became in contention during our conversation in the past in conformance with chapter eighteen section, the village code, including all work necessary to make ready the area for sidewalk installation. That second part after that words, I think is in play in the second point versus just the sidewalk itself, which includes things that Karen had listed as, you know, potential challenges that could incur, be incurred during the attempt to install a sidewalk.
And why do we have any language about pre versus normal annexation in here at all?
I think, I think the reason for it is, is that when this ordinance was amended, um, the primary issue that was on the table at that time was pre-annexation. I'm sorry about the board to make sure that everybody understood it. It was a presumption that the annexation policies that were followed by the village prior to that time and in the annexation agreements that existed consistently were already in place. But that's a good question. But you know, if you, if you said to me, clean up this ordinance, Jim, and how would you do it? So we don't run into these kinds of issues for staff and enforcement. And this is important, you want to follow the same policy. And I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying this is what you're dealing with. I'd probably change the title to annexation and pre-annexation agreements. So everybody understood this applies to the whole gamut of this whole thing. And I changed, like I said, in E, the word, uh, in the fourth line, agreement to ordinance.
Lee, I have you next, and Wayne, I've got you after him.
Yeah. I mean, my point of view is like, um, Attorney Kippen said, we, we kind of flushed a lot of this out in two thousand and eighteen. In, in my opinion, I think yes, we should require sidewalks. I mean, in fact, we just voted on an annexation agreement today that required sidewalks. Um, I think the requirement should be the same. It should just be amended to say pre-annexation and annexation agreements. I think some of the callouts at the top in terms of unique things, for example, corner lots. I mean, to me, that's just, it's just more cost. I get it, but at the end of the day, that's the policy and the, and you, you come into this eyes wide open to the contract. You know upfront now that if you're septic or well fails, you come in and you're on the hook for installing sidewalks. No one's going to install sidewalks if they don't have to. I, I would say probably ninety-five percent of people. So there has to be some mechanism for us to get the sidewalk in, and this is really the only way. Now, I would be open to some sort of, and I know this is kind of secondary, but I would be open to some sort of grant program for maybe ADA accessibility, because I know there's some unique uniqueness to some of these, um, sidewalks that could throw a curve ball. Um, maybe something like two thousand dollars up to twenty percent of the ADA portion of the, of the project, but I would like to get the village board out of these. And I would like to afford to just be staff running with the costs and have staff have the homeowner get the bids, get the work done and call it a day. In terms of stormwater issues, I get it. There's a lot of, um, culverts, but there's also a lot of streets in, incorporate Roselle and in, in, um, Buttonwood that don't have curb and gutters too. So to me, it, it is what it is. If, it's the cost is the cost. The homeowner could do a cost benefit analysis, say, how much does it cost for me to get a septic system and a well fixed versus getting sidewalks? And if they're happy with the cost for the septic and well, then get the septic and well. If it's better deal to get the sidewalks put in, then just do that and come into the village.
I got Wayne next, but Bruce, you'll be right after him.
No, I. I knew that. No, I knew that.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm going to add this much, but just for the new board members, we have pre-annexation agreements where people put sidewalks in linked to no sidewalks. So it was so important for them to have sidewalks, we made them put them in. It didn't make any sense, but there they are. So now this annexation agreement, they just happen to be up against a road, another Roselle sidewalk. It's to their, their should, they should continue to sidewalk. So I'm with Lee and, and, uh, I believe that this, this number one on our topic, they should install sidewalks, whether they're pre-annexation or annexation. If they were annexing, which we have some situations where they annexed a lot and then they built a new home, well, they put sidewalks in. So it's, it's the same thing. They were in a pre-annexation agreement. They built a new house and became annexed to Roselle. So we have so many people that we're telling have to have sidewalks. I can't see having any group that can't have to have sidewalks. I think we should be consistent with all of the annexations as far as sidewalks. Like many people drive by going, they must not be in Roselle because they don't have a sidewalk. So.
Bruce?
The first point of clarity. I wasn't, I was deferring that question, not under the pretense that I was going to go no or anyplace else. I simply, we, that is what it is. I'm not changing, trying to change it in any way, shape or form. What I wanted to do is I wanted to use this as an opportunity to talk about ideas, thoughts, and how we, the village can serve the community. First thing is, if I'm, my correction is, if my memory serves correct, you cannot repair or reinstall or update a septic system. Is that, am I correct on that? I thought that came up at one point. And so they are bound, if they can't fix it, to have to connect to this, to the village.
I think it depends on like, it's the county that actually regulates that. So it, if they have proximity to be able to connect to the sewer system, typically it's required by the county.
And I've remembered to page was one of those where you can't get a permit to get that fixed if the city is there. So in examples of that, what I'm trying to say is then we do technically have them hostage because the county's not going to support them. We're going to come in and what I'm just asking is that we play a consultative role. I'm not asking us to go for bids. I'm not asking us for to go in to, to do the job. But we have the knowledge. We're the ones who can go out and send all of our engineers, staff, people of knowledge to help these people understand the implications that it is. And then, then they have a clear understanding of what they have to do, what's involved in it, what options we have. Because culverts get filled, water runs down streets, we don't have curbs. And would we go and then impose them to go in and dig out those culverts? That's what I'm trying to get to, so that we don't just simply go in and look at all these exceptions and we sit behind our dust and say, yep, you need a sidewalk. We should go out there, explain to them what they have to do, what it is. And you know what? You are where you are. You want to go try fight the county, fight the county. But this is what our ordinance says, and we should and need to have the sidewalks. We need to do them the service. That's what I was trying to get to. And that's why I was trying to skip down to question number three. Because all the rest of those, we've already agreed to, and I don't want to revisit twenty nineteen. We had enough of that and I'm in for, still favor for. And question number three is, what do we do and how do we do it? And that's what I'd like to get to.
So I'm going to just check in, not to put our three new board members on the spot, but I want to be fair to everyone who wasn't here for twenty nineteen. Is there any difference of opinion? And then we can go to three as far as the implementation piece?
Oh, I'm on board with that.
All right. So Karen, do you want to discuss a local happy path, typical timeline, and then what takes us off that happy path? Cause I think that's important.
Um, so typically it starts unhappy. Someone's having a problem with their well, someone's having a problem with their septic system. Um, some of the inquiries come from people who are purchasing a, a property that's unincorporated, on, on well and septic, and they want to annex and connect, um, upon purchasing the house. Um, so they contact me first and I let them know what the availability of utilities are. Um, especially in our donut hole, we don't have all utilities on all streets. So I give them the utility information and then my next step is to look up any recaptures that are associated with the property. So from So for previous extensions of utilities, money that is owed, how much? And then the village usually offers a payment plan, so I always offer that to the property owner as well. And I give them sort of all the fees and a timeline in a petition for annexation. The petition basically states the major highlights of what's in the annexation agreement. So it says, the petition says, it's good for twenty years. You have to abide by everything in the agreement for twenty years. You have to connect to utilities typically or require it within six months to make sure it gets done. And then if utility is not available, we'll put in the agreement and in the petition that they have to connect upon the availability of the utility. And then the third piece is sidewalks. So right now, all these current annexation agreements and petitions state installation of sidewalks within six months. And then if you can't do it within that timeframe, you can put up a bond and install as security for the village, so you can install it at a later date, and then we'll refund the bond to you. So all of those guidelines are listed out to them when they apply for annexation. They return those fees and the petition to myself. And that's usually when they apply for a building permit to connect to utilities, building permit to connect to sidewalk or construct a sidewalks. Sometimes it includes like additional public works engineering review, depending on where the utilities are. And then I work with the village clerk to make sure that notification takes place appropriately to township officials as well as the newspaper. And then you guys see it no less than fifteen, no more than thirty days after that.
You had mentioned that you provide a summary of the fees associated with it. What is in that summary?
Um, so it's all the application fees. So there's an application fee, an annexation fee, and then an engineering review fee. And we charge a five hundred dollar partially refundable escrow to cover recording costs with the county. Because we have to record all the ordinances in the plat. And then we have a utility connection section. So it says, connection to sewer, your contractor. So it's very clear from the beginning that we're not paying for that. If there's a recapture, I give the amount owed and the recapture number, so they know sort of what recapture they're paying back. Um, and then, uh, do that, and then the permit application fee, application fees. So there's a sewer tap fee of fifteen hundred for properties in DuPage, half price for properties in Cook, because they're part of M W R D. And then for water, you have the water tap fee and then a water meter. So it's depending on how big your tap is, and then how big of a meter you need to serve the property. Um, again, all those connections say your contractor. And then the final section is a public sidewalk section that says your contractor. Sometimes I have the lineal feat of sidewalk they have to install, which they can use to speak with a contractor. But it says, you know, your contractor has to perform that work.
Bruce? And so all of that, all I'm, all I would change is the fact that we take a visit and help guide them in what the uniquenesses may be. Can we, how far can they be off of the street? How far do they have this connecting situations, grade, all the, all the five bullets that you identify? So we could just simply give them a situational point. And then I would like to propose something like what Trustee Trail was saying is, maybe on one of those really weird and unique circumstances, someone to come up with that kind of a capital at the initial in six months. Maybe we need to work with them and say, all right, you've got to put your bond down, and then you have this and and over a period of time to get some of this installed. That's what I'm looking for, so that our policy stays there. It's the procedure of around it. And how do we, and how do we make that the best for the citizens of Rosa?
And then just just to respond to that, people do often ask when I speak to them, the implications of installing a sidewalk. They're usually much more familiar with their front yard than I am, sitting from my desk. So I always refer them to Public Works if there are any questions. And I know Kristen and Matt and Karen have always very promptly gone out to properties and helped. I know Matt's working on two right now that they're, you know, making sure the sidewalk is installed properly for recent annexation. So that is something that we do.
But the going out after is after. I'm looking, and if we do it before, great. Somewhere along the line, we got into a gap. And we just need to make sure that that gets firmed up, so that we don't have situations of recent. And I'm not going to go down that
Yep.
piece, but that's, that's where I'm just getting is, is we've just got to make sure that I wouldn't know for, in some cases, when I, when we looked at this back in twenty nineteen, that we couldn't install the sidewalk until we actually went out and looked at it and saw that there was these culverts and there was no place to put them. That's the kind of thing we need to go in and look, and then we need to tell them, these are what you have to do. You have to put in pipe, you have to fill it in, et cetera, et cetera, your cost, so that they understand. And then, hey, this is now a much larger project. And we then can bring that back to the board to review and look at ideas and options for them. And that's all I'm looking to do.
Just to help make sure that we can scale this up on, and I know it's probably very lumpy, and it's dependent on people having a issue. How many annexations or pre-annexations do you think we see on a quarterly or on a six month average?
Um, we could probably get, you know, recent years where we had triggered annexations from pre-annexation agreements, but it's usually probably anywhere from two to five a year. I get far more inquiries than I do actual annexations.
And then Public Works, Karen, until I figure out a more elegant solution. Is that something that we can absorb with staff on hand? And that depending, obviously, on, you know, high project times and periods like that, you feel like we, if we switch to that kind of proactive model, you would be able to staff and support that as is?
Yeah, if we're doing the two to five a year, if it becomes, you know, every inquiry that comes in, that could be a different story depending on inquiry, but every annexation, yes, we could accommodate that.
Perfect. Thank you. And Lee and Wayne, I got you next. So Lee?
Oh, I was just going to say, the one question I have is if a current Roselle residence culvert fails, who pays for that? The village or the resident?
Um, that's the responsibility of the resident.
Yeah, that's one of the things I wanted to call out, because I think Jason and I were talking about it, and we just wanted to confirm. That's one of the reasons why I like the current situation we're looking at now. Like I thought Rosa, I thought we paid for it as part of like the storm drainage. But again, I think it's just to Bruce's point, more communication around the types of things that it involves when you, you know, you're putting a sidewalk in. It could mean a culvert, totally, you know, in in someone's mind, that's not part of the sidewalk. But it really is, because it's underneath the sidewalk, and someone might just think it's just the the actual concrete. Or like I said before, the ADA part of it. Again, that's a government regulation. It's a good regulation that the government has. But I think that that's where I'm saying I'd be more supportive of maybe some sort of grant program for that to cover some offset some of the ADA costs of that project. Because if if you're a homeowner and you're installing something on your own property, you might not necessarily need to be ADA compliant, but because now it's like a public sidewalk, it needs to be ADA compliant. And I think it's reasonable for the village to potentially give a grant to offset some of that portion of the of the amount. But I think short of just a full communication of like, here's what everything involves, and to even Karen's point, like to try, the Public Works Karen, to to try to alleviate some of this time, to just really have like a good one pager on like, hey, this is what sidewalks mean in the context of this. You might think it's just blocks, but it's really like culverts, grading, ADA compliance, like X, Y, and Z that can make the costs add up, because no one's, like I said, we require builders when they build homes to put sidewalks in. We passed the annexation agreement tonight. If I asked the petitioners if they would put a sidewalk in, if we didn't require them to, my my assumption is they'd say no, but I could be wrong. But I think at the end of the day, I don't want the village to have like sidewalk, no sidewalks. We also had public comment where, you know, there's a lot of towns that don't have good public walkways, and we need to be cognizant of people that are walking through town to make sure that they have a connected sidewalk system that they could get around it. And so this is really the only way to do it. And I just think to Bruce's point, I think being eyes wide open to the public to tell them what exactly this all entails is it suffices. If they don't want to do it, then they don't, they don't have to do it. But to your point about them being held hostage, I mean, they went into their purchase eyes wide open when they purchased an unincorporated property. One of the first things I told my realtor, I said, do not get me an, do not show me any listings and unincorporated properties. You know why? Pre-annexation agreements and well and septic. So I would not even entertain the thought of living in unincorporated, to be honest with you. So to me, it's just you went eyes wide open. When you purchased your property, you knew that at some point this stuff could fail. You knew that, you know, at some point the rubber hits the road and something's going to happen, and you're, for lack of a better word, yes, you're at the whim of the of the municipality providing the service to you, because we're under no obligation to provide that service.
Wayne?
Oh, I'd just like to see how I would work through this. I had to build a ramp on the house that I own on Prospect. Okay, I don't know how to build a ramp. I don't know what the pitch should be. I don't know what the ADA compliance is. But I knew I need to build that, because the village said I got to do that. Okay? So, um, I hire a contractor, and he makes drawings, and he submits them to the village. And the village approves them. They tell them, hey, you got to have a a plaza area here of six feet long or whatever. It can't just be a ramp that wheelchairs go flying down. I mean, so the point is, I didn't have anything to do with it. It costs eleven thousand dollars, and I put it in the hands of the professionals who could not build this thing without the approval of the village. So somewhere along that line, a qualified person in the village, probably Steve Jones or somebody like that, looked over the plans and said, this this apply, this is approved. But they did make some modifications with the contractor. So using that scenario, I buy a house in an unincorporated area of Roselle, the donut hole, and I'm told I got to put a sidewalk. Do you think I'm going to put the sidewalk in? I have no clue how to put a sidewalk in. And it's a lot of hard work. So I assume that they will get a contractor and they will approach the village with some drawings and some, they'll know the specifications. And then at that time, they they might be advised that they have to put in a culvert. And then that contractor who's doing concrete work anyway is going to tear up what's there and put new concrete over there. So my bottom line is, to Bruce's point, I think there's some collaboration between the village and the contractor. Nobody should be blindsided by anything. So where am I missing the 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 data here? It should be working like clockwork.
So I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce or or Karen or anyone, I think what the issue is here is we disclose upfront that you have to build it and all necessary requirements, but at the time of accepting of the contract and going to approval, they're not submitting necessarily for permit the construction. So the review, as you described it, is happening once you've started the permit process. So in this situation, you've signed a contract to annex in, you've made yourself legally liable to do it. And now a month or up to six months later, you're applying to do with the work, and you're finding out what you actually have to do at that point. And being hit at that stage and having the shock is what some of us are trying to avoid or that's.
Don't we know when the point of sale is that we could make?
It's not the, it's not a point of sale, Wayne. It is, someone comes in and wants to go in and gets their, there's, and and I don't want inquiries. Just to be clear, those people are just testing the water. If someone is really legit and ready to go, they won't know what all is involved. And that's where I think we can give them the service of, oh, by the way, I I we took a look at your property and you have a bunch of these other things that you have to account for. It's not just laying the sidewalk. And, you know, you're going to have to have, you know, you're going to have to get a contract for that. You might want to get some bids, because this is going to be an ordeal. This is, no, I don't want to go down that. I don't want, no, I just want to simply go and say, hey, by the way, this is, this, these are the five things you have to do. This is bigger than a sidewalk. You should go get your, get some numbers or get some idea, because this is going to be an ordeal for you. That's what I'm trying to get to the residents, so that they can understand what it is. And then when those circumstances come up, that's when staff might bring something back to the board saying, here's this, an annexation with some unique circumstances. Do we need to require the six month? Do we want to maybe extend it? Do we want to have a grant? Whatever that kind of thing comes up, that we can then help them along the way. Because as as much as it is, and and, you know, Lee, I appreciate your point of, they don't have to connect in. But if the county's not going to support them, then the only thing we're doing is saying, yep, you can't move in, you can't live in your house. And we don't want that either, right? So that's why I'm just saying, we just work with them a little bit more. And most of these, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, are going to be the, yep, that's just a linear chunk of concrete you got to throw down. And it's one of these weird ones come up that we just give them the best that we can offer them.
Karen Young, did you want to expand?
I just wanted to note, we've got some tools already in our toolbox that we can provide to residents, community development and public works work together regarding driveway permit standards and details that's already on our website. So certainly, as we start going through this process, there's a really good defined document that can provide information both to them and their contractor, and then certainly with a field visit, could expand upon that.
One of the things as an attorney that I see frequently in these situations is that the municipalities recommend, as to what I would characterize as the fine details associated with the engineering and the like. Recommendation is, you have to have a professional that you're going to have to hire to get those details worked out. And there's some really good reasons for that. Number one, there's a number of ways to skin a cat. And if the village starts to go out and say, this is the way to do it, and it turns out that that cat was a lot more expensive to skin that way than an alternative, then suddenly we become blame worthy for it as opposed to not. So I think one of the things in staff's toolbox that should be there always is to say, with regard to engineering details, architectural details and design details, you need to hire a professional who will make a permit application to the village that we will then review to determine whether or not it's ordinance compliant. But we're not going to design it for you, because that can, we've had that happen. I mean, even for example, we had a situation where we had a a water line fail. Water line or sewer line, I don't know, it was about two months ago when, two years ago, excuse me, when Andy was mayor. And one of the village staff and Public Works, no longer there, recommended a particular contractor to do the work, or at least they said they did. Well, the homeowner took that as this is the solution to the problem, and the contractor came in and he started the installation, and it wasn't consistent with the village code. And Public Works had to shut it down. But suddenly the village was responsible for it, because somebody in Public Works said, oh, yeah, this guy does work in town, and he's a, you know, he's a qualified contractor. So those are the kinds of problems that in real life we've had when we have tried to be, let's say, more helpful than was for the good of the village.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bruce.
Oh, I was just going to try and sum this up. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm not looking for any kind of us going out with any kind of quotes, bids, or even recommendations. Simply awareness and guidance in a procedural manner. I think we keep keep the annexation agreement and pre-annexation agreement as is, with the exception of what Jim had mentioned, we have some cleanup to do. And we simply just work this into our operating procedure and use the tools at our hand, so that circumstances like this are just aware to the.
Yep. And so I want to take a pulse before I throw, I'm going to pull on a thread and see how we still feel about that. But on a normal circumstance where time is flexible for us, is there any objection to that kind of approach where we continue to move forward with the policy as is, sidewalk should be installed as well as all costs associated with that proper installation per the code? And we would have during the application process, review done by Public Works just to call attention to additional site specific challenges, be that culvert, you name it.
Whatever it is.
That everyone feel comfortable that before we go to the crisis situation?
You're excluding, you're excluding the crisis.
Well, I'm not necessarily excluding it, but I want to pressure test it, because I think we can all agree on a normal situation, that that seems logical, but I want to, I want to turn it up a notch and see if it works and we're all still happy with it. That's all. But normal situation.
Yes.
So let's go to the situation that we've seen in the past where, oh, sorry, Lee, go ahead.
Just one final comments on some of these things, because I want to get some additional clarity. So just so there's no misunderstanding, I'm totally working, I'm totally fine with working with the people wanting to come in. I I hope more people want to come in. I do think it's very critical to David's point, you you said something that resonated with me regarding people, you know, coming in, and then now they figure out they're on on the hook for all this stuff. I want this all lying, before they sign the pre-annexation agreement, they should understand all the stuff they should be on the hook for. And then Jim's going to really appreciate this comment. Tell them to consult a lawyer to read the pre-annexation agreement. You know how many people just look at a contract and sign it? You know how many people just look at a contract and sign it? They don't know what they're agreeing to. But again, that's not our job to figure out that they're signing a good contract or a bad contract. That's our contract, our contract. But by pretty much contract law, like 101 is, I'm gonna write a contract with terms that are what I want. So if I present it to you, you should have your own lawyer say, hey, you're, you're gonna be on the hook for X, Y, and Z, you know, additional costs based on how this ordinance is labeled. So again, we definitely don't wanna give legal advice if we're staff, but I think we should say consultant attorney, if you need this annexation agreement looked at. And I, like I said, have a frequently asked questions or a one pager that says, just enumerates the potential costs. I think that's like the most critical thing here because if someone has a pre-annexation agreement after all that information's given to them and they're still gonna say something once it, the rubber hits the road and they have to pony up the money, I don't know what to tell them. The other question I have for Jason, how often does it happen? Cause I know it's happened a handful of times when I'm on, on the board, where people sign the pre-annexation agreement, they're annexed in and they don't do the sidewalk.
Well, I, we included in your memo, I think there's at least one we're currently have identified and have communicated with and they know they need to do it, don't wanna do it. And at last talk, we've not issued a subsequent building permit for them to do other work because they said it was too expensive to do sidewalks, but apparently not too expensive to do this other work. So we haven't yet ratcheted it up to like, we're gonna terminate your water kinda stuff. We're trying again, just to encourage compliance. Um, and I think we've had a couple other ones, Karen, maybe that have come up that we've used similar tactic. They've asked for a permit for one thing and we say, well, before we do that, you're indebted to the village. Give us a sidewalk. Um, so those, there's kind of those couple or are there more?
No, and then just the one, um, on the list in the memo of 301 West.
Right. And then how about in the last like five years? Do you remember offhand?
No, most of the annexations we've done in recent history have been redevelopment of a property. So they're installing a sidewalk because they're putting an addition on or they're building a new house. So it's all wrapped up into the cost anyway.
Right now, I think we have two active, they're not in compliance with their annexation agreement and we're starting to turn up the pressure as we feel appropriate to get compliance before escalating it to the ultimate village board, public hearing disconnection.
Right. And then can I ask just one question on the attorney, Kenipin? So in that new annexation agreement, can you remind me, do we have the ability to put like a lien on their property if they don't do the sidewalk? I just can't remember that.
No, that's why we required, uh, two things. Particularly with Roselle countryside, we required the posting of the bond. And we also will, in that circumstance, if you remember, there was the one gentleman who got the township to refuse to let us require the sidewalks. And so he said, okay, post the bond. Um, and then, um, uh, as far as, um, the, the lien itself, we concluded that as a non-home rule, we couldn't do that. Um, and, um, liens tend to get really, really gnarly for a variety of reasons. So if we can avoid them, uh, they're a good thing.
Right. But then we did have the, the agreement run with the, the land, right?
Yes, that's right. We, we established a covenant system where they actually go longer than the annexation agreement. So we've had a number of situations where we've had annexation agreements expire. And the people say, well, you can't make me put in the sidewalk. Now the annexation agreement's expired. And, um, we wanted to avoid that and we use those covenants to do it. The covenants have been recorded against the properties. And they basically say, if you want a continuing water, after the expiration of the annexation agreement, you better put sidewalk in if you're gonna annex. Otherwise, we're gonna cut your water off.
Got it. And for clarity, you did say those are recorded on the property with the DuPage County or Cook County.
Eddie can confirm that. I think that Eddie.
I was just gonna say, we had a test case for it this week. I had someone on Turner who bought one of the houses from 2018. And at closing was made aware of everything. So he called and asked for an explanation of the covenant and the agreement.
So it works.
Some is now, I know, I'm totally trapped because that was one of the things.
Yeah, absolutely.
The covenant out, out there. And I think that's the critical thing. That's why I said, like, getting the information upfront, telling people to contact an attorney if they're, if they're not, you know, whatever, if they're confused or whatever, just it, it can't be on staff to figure that out for them. I mean, this is, you know, if they're handling a few hundred thousand dollar property, I mean, or some of these houses, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. They could spend the 500 bucks to get a real estate attorney to look over the contract to figure out like, okay, what am I really on the hook for, you know, with our kinda frequently asked question? Again, I get it. Some people are under, you know, stress, they're, they're septic failed, you know, they, they need to get this annexation agreement, they sign it, but like, you know what? It's sometimes better just to get a hotel for a few days and then like, make sure you have everything ironed out from the village, from an attorney, and just have all your bases covered. I mean, that's the critical thing.
I think that's where you.
Well, and that's exactly where I wanna go next is so let's, there are instances where we have had people connect to our utilities before an annexation agreement is before the board for approval, in which case this whole scenario of us providing proper disclosure before, you know, the ink is dried, so to speak, is, is not feasible. So I think it'd be helpful for us to understand what are those circumstances? When does that happen? And, you know, is the board comfortable with how that is? How do we, how, how does implementation occur in that situation? So I'll give it over to you.
So just to clarify, are you speaking of like utility connections or just sidewalks?
Correct. You, where we have allowed the utility, they're, they're not, in a pre-annexation, they're a new annexation, no prior agreement, but they've had, we've allowed them to connect to our utilities before we've actually approved any, any agreement with us, which would then allow the sidewalks and whatnot to occur.
Yeah. So sometimes we're getting notifications from the county um, that people's, uh, septic or wells are failing. Typically they'll just call public works. A lot of times homeowners will just call and ask where the water and sewer is and that's a trigger. It's really case by case dependent on on many factors. I think you guys are probably more out in the field. If a septic is failing, you're the ones communicating with the homeowner more so than myself, but.
So from a utility connection standpoint, if it doesn't have an annexation, we, we direct everyone back to community development to work through the process. Um, which is what they still have to submit their permits. They still have to go through the typical process. So um, if it's an emergency sewer repair, um, other than inquiries, if our utilities are available, um, typically it goes through the typical annexation process. We don't have the authority to review a permit or to approve a permit without an actual permit application and annexation process.
Yes, Bruce.
So I, I'm, I'm thinking, when I think of this process that, that I was trying to describe, and I think we were all wo- working together. So thank you all. I think that board hasn't approved it, but the fact of, back to we're building off Willie, if we bring the awareness to them that, okay, this is an emergency. I got it. You have no other choice. But oh, by the way, this is all the other things that you have to account for. I think that could still be done in the timeframe, regardless of whether we, the board have approved it or not. And then back to Lee's point, you know what you are going into because we have given you insights. We have at least said, you're a unique situation. You're on a corner. You're gonna have, you know, more sidewalk to have to deal with, et cetera, et cetera, regardless of whether it's an emergency or not. That's my thinking.
Well, I've always in very recent history, there was a utility connection made before the public hearing for the annexation agreement occurred. I permitted that at the time to happen because the, all the fees had been paid for upfront. So they paid their recapture, they paid their tap-ons, they paid their annexation fees, all that sort of stuff. So I was holding, the village was holding probably about 20 grand of their money just in recaptures and fees. So they're putting money on the table. They're, they're, they're in it. So.
And I don't, I don't want that to stop.
Yeah.
I'm just, let's just give them the awareness that they need before and then, then hey, it is what it is. And this is what you have to account for. And the only other thing I could add to that would be is I think we, a, a new item on the board or discussion and is what do we do when, you know, you've got a critical situation? What happens if the critical situation is also the fact that they're tapped out? Right? How do we then work with them? What do we do? Grants, et cetera, et cetera. I think that would be something we could bring back to the board for new business to talk and discuss. And then this way we have that in play as well.
And so just for timeline, just to make sure that we're all comfortable and we know we can implement, what's the average time from application to maybe paying all those fees? How, is that like a day? Is that four days a week? Like?
It really depends on how fast they can come up with the money. So many of our tap-ons require fairly large recapture payments in the 10 to 20,000 dollar range in addition to all the other fees, including fire protection district, which, which can also climb up three, $4,000. Um, so it's really dependent on them getting their money together.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that like, I'm, my worst case scenario is we've got a paving project going on. So we have an engineer on site there monitoring things. We have something else gonna wastewater treatment. And we've got an emergency tap-on and do we have the resources to send someone there to actually have that consultive conversation? I know that's worst case scenario, obviously, but I just wanna make sure that we feel comfortable that we don't have a situation where we're at the dais having a conversation again in, you know, five years.
I think a lot of times when a septic fails, it's not like you must leave your house within 10 minutes. It's, you can have trucks come out and pump. It's expensive. It's annoying. But it's emergency situations in that this is not something that can continue to go on for months and months. It's more like within the next couple of weeks, you gotta connect the house, the utility because your neighbors are calling to complain about this now.
Lee, I just have a question. So this scenario that you just described where you gave the okay on the, on the annexation, if I'm understanding, they had a pre-annexation agreement. Okay, they didn't have pre-annexation. Got it. So, yeah, I mean, this, there could be extenuating circumstances here. I mean, in this particular example. But to me, you know, all of this stuff, even this emergency tap-on before village board formal approval of the annexation agreement, that gets taken care of by, and if it's not taken care of now, I think it needs to get taken care of by the pre-annexation agreement because it's essentially, it should be just a formality where we just say, okay, you know, you wanna connect in, you paid all your proper fees to the village. There's this, you know, formal like approval by the board, right? But before, when they do that pre-annexation agreement, that's the point in time of which to Bruce's point, all this information gets bundled to them. And then whether it's five years later, 10 years later, 15 years later, whatever it is down the road, and then all of a sudden they need to annex it, to annex in, then it's like, okay, now all the costs come. And so it's like, I mean, what can we do about it? It is what it is.
That's driven by the question of will the property continue?
Right.
That's the critical juncture. You know, that's the cornerstone in answering that question. One of the things you can do, I think that's consistent with what we're talking about is, um, and I, I think this might be worthwhile is you prepare a basic information sheet that conveys all the information that, um, Bruce wants conveyed to a potential and it, you know, has, it, it's, it's, it's generalized. It's not super detailed, but it gives them the direction to become
Super detailed.
And you have a statement on the bottom of it that says, I've been informed by village staff that in order to secure the utilities that I'm seeking to secure, I will have to enter into a pre-annexation or an annexation agreement that complies with the foregone. Now, that's not a binding contract at that point, but if somebody comes in before the village board and starts to say, geez, I don't wanna do this. Jesus is a bad idea. Well, we gave you the sewer, we gave you the water, you signed off on it with eyes wide open, as you've characterized this way. And that puts the board in a much more, um, strengthened position to say, you came to this with eyes wide open, don't come in and whine to us now.
You have an understanding.
About, yeah, your, your, your unfairness.
Yeah.
So that's just a suggestion.
Right. So this, so this particular property then, if I'm understanding correct, they didn't have a pre-annexation agreement. They're already contiguous to the village. And so we just allowed them to come in. Cause to me, that is also a separate discussion too. Because if, if your current unincorporated resident was contiguous to the village and all of a sudden something happens, again, I still think, you know, that, but again, the communication's the critical thing because if this homeowner knew right away, had that same one pager we have for pre-annexation slash annexation agreement and said, hey, just so you know, before you do anything, here's that, here's what you could be hit with. Here's the cost that could be, you know, that you might be liable for. And again, contact an attorney, get their point of view. And then if you're still, you still wanna sign up, then it is what it is. Now again, for this situation, maybe there's, there's a one-off we could potentially do if, if it's legal. I know there was some issue with, you know, treating like, you know, people in a similar situation differently. I'm okay with this particular one to maybe deviate from the, the forward-looking policy. But I think the forward-looking policy should be, if there's a contiguous property even that doesn't have a pre-annexation agreement, it's gonna, that wants to come into the village and hook up, I'm okay with giving staff the latitude to sort of hook up before we give formal approval or call an emergency meeting. I'll come, uh, whatever it takes to get something done. But I think as long as everything's eyes wide open, they have all the information and they make that decision, they're liable for everything.
I don't think any of it, I, and I was never disagreeing with any of that. I think it's just, I want the awareness and I want.
I just wanted to make sure that, because this situation, they didn't have the pre-annexation agreement at all. So then they didn't really have this document for 10 years that they knew that they signed 10 years ago. So this is a little bit different in that I live next to you, I'm an unincorporated, my septic fails, now I need something and I'm, I'm in a panic mode. Someone at the village is telling me, just sign all this stuff, give me money and boom, I'm good. You know what I mean? And then you get something else versus if I call community development and they tell me, hey, these are the costs you're gonna have to pay. And on top of that, there's gonna be a sidewalk fee. And that sidewalk fee could include other things that, just not the concrete. It could include culvert, could include grading, ADA compliance, it could include, you know, multiple things. So if you want, you know, it's up to you. Give, you know, contact a lawyer, think about it, do whatever, come back in a day or two. And then you're on the hook for it, you know? And to your point, I'm totally fine with the village gives guidance or, you know, whatever, but I think the information is the critical piece of it because now someone might just be like, hey, I, I, I got, I need this, you know, and I'm just gonna sign in a, in a haste. That's, that's the thing we're trying to avoid.
Yeah. So I think we're seeing a circle, the drain. I think we're ready to stick the landing. So.
So, so what I'm hearing on that is even when there is an emergency, it's not like tomorrow. They've got some time to work through and even if need be, there's time so that staff can even work it into their agenda to do that walkthrough and talk through before, to give them the understanding.
Because I had a septic system in Medina. And for a month I had to have a service come out once a week and drain it. So. Thing, but still it kept me in the house and, uh, we had time. So.
So based on what I'm hearing, where it seems we're going is that we would continue with the policy, perhaps update the language to reflect both pre-annexation and annexation, require the sidewalk and all costs associated with it. And now layer in prior to the completion of the application and present, presentation to the board that there is some engineering consultation or disclaimer that's being done, not with price or anything, but just these are things that you would need to have quoted out by your contractor prior to this being kind of submitted for approval regardless of the situation. Um, and potentially having some type of not waiver, but disclaimer statement signed um, with the current paperwork and a simplified, not 10-page version of the document that we have out there that kinda highlights maybe some of these situations, um, that could be presented. Is that what I'm reading from the board as far as from a policy perspective?
That summarizes our discussion.
I think, I think a couple of things, I think communication is key. And I think that's what we're keep coming back to here is communicating. But I also kinda sitting back here and listening to, um, it is what it is comments and, and along that line. And I think that we also have to keep in perspective the, the residents and getting, having an, an incident happen in their house that all of a sudden they have to come up with 20, I'm hearing 25,000, I'm hearing 30,000. Some of the, our residents do not have the ability to just go to the well and pull that, pull that out of the sky here. And I think we have to be respectful of that as well. So that's where the communication, I think, is really super important because they have to make a choice. I mean, and if they don't know before that maybe they have to get that, um, septic drained however many times because they can't afford $25,000, maybe they're gonna have to pay a regular fee until they can come up with something. They, maybe they don't have the ability to get a home equity loan or whatever it is. And I think we need to be respectful of our residents for that.
So, so Mr. Mayor, is the action then to come back with some sort of maybe procedure and process that we would want? Along with then maybe adding on to the agenda for some time to talk about what, um, because he was talking about regarding grants financed or something? Is that kind of where the?
Yeah. So I would say. Yeah. So I would say, given that we have a resident that we've put in limbo until the end of September, the idea would bring back the policy um, for amendment to clarify some of these things, um, as the attorney has, uh, shared. Having a policy kind of shared with the board that would not need our approval, but would be shared as kind of a, as a matter of fact and kind of make sure we all have awareness. And I would agree. I think at some point we have probably the time, probably not, maybe at the, before the end of this year, maybe it's early next year, but based on the timeline of construction and whatnot, and thinking about just hypothetical situations, we could probably, I would say, early 2022, consider and approve a grant policy. We can probably have a conversation before the end of the year without a doubt, but probably not approving something, knowing that budget is going to kick off soon. Um, but we could definitely get something approved before construction season of spring. And thinking probably from a village perspective, we wouldn't have grant money that isn't reimbursed upon payment and not just given upfront. That gives us some more leeway from a resident impact perspective. I think we're, we're in good shape there. So.
seizure thing can come sooner than that because.
We would need to discuss that at the next meeting in order to make sure we feel comfortable for.
That's where I was going.
Absolutely. So is that, with that being the case, Cheryl, would that help from your perspective?
Yeah, it would. It would. I wasn't opposed to the ordinance being, um, made even and, and corrected so that it is going forward. But I believe the real issue here is the communication to people before they're handed a bill. And, and if they're handed a bill, then you have to respect the bill that you did hand to them and not change it along the way.
But I think going forward, we should not be involved in any quoting really beyond our, our fees and whatnot in that case too, since we have no construction obligation here.
Awareness only.
So the staff understand, so I think what we'll shoot for, uh, the September 13th meeting is a ordinance amendment uh, based on some of the things that Jim had highlighted and board direction, and then a presentation of the policy. So I, we can have that probably under new business, just as a discussion point, since there's no final action. And then, um, we'll tee up when we feel comfortable before the end of the year, something around grant programs. So we can see what we can fit in, um, before the end of the year. Any clarification that you need, Karen or Jason? All works feel good about that? It's kind of a all hands on deck one. So I think Tom, you're the one that don't, and police and fire, I guess you guys are lucky, although you probably have some, some role on some of those regulations. So, um, with that being said, we'll move to other businesses. Are there any other business anyone from the board wishes to ring for at this time? We have no executive session tonight. So is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. Any abstentions? We're adjourned at 8:46. Thank you very much.